Good evening. The Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order, Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
I see fresh coverage, good to see you, Patrick. As always, we'll start with our prayer and pledge allegiance. Pastor Hayes is here, who's president of the Steel Alliance of Liberty County, will come forward, please sort of lead us in invocation and our pledge.
Good evening, happy new year to everyone. Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Most gracious in heaven, your Father, we are so thankful and grateful just for being here on today, on this new year. We ask that you continue to watch over us, keep these, your leaders, in good health and life and strength, and bless them in all areas of their lives. And we ask even now, in this meeting, that you would give them insight and wisdom, Lord God, concerning the things of your people in this county and what they have an opportunity to have an effect upon. We ask you to just continue to bless this Liberty County, keep us in perfect peace and prosperity, and continue to propel us into the destination where you desire for us to go, the direction that you would desire for us to go, to grow into what you need us to be in this hour. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir. Audience, Commissioners, you know, in the past, we've done it, we don't have to do it, but I want to say happy new year to everybody. Good to see you, we look forward to this 2023 and what it has to offer. And to those of you who were sworn in recently, congratulations to you again for being sworn in to serve, so look forward to working with you. I think our record, it does speak for itself as to the confidence we made, but we have not done it individually, we've done it as a unit, and we look forward to working with this unit in the future. If I can be of assistance to you, please don't hesitate to call me, we can discuss any item, we may not agree, but we can discuss it, and we'll work together to move forward as we've done in the past. So at this time, if any of you all have any greetings you want to express, I'll open up the floor.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Hello. I'd like to first say give thanks to the good Lord for allowing me to serve as citizens of Liberty County District One for 24 years, and now another four years, which would be, if I lived to see, would be a total of 28 years. Over the years, I've been involved with the other Commissioners, we've done great accomplishment for the citizens, but the list gets longer, along with the expectation. I'll say this, a need for water to be provided for the entire county is a must. As houses are being built, we need to look at a way of coming off septic system and going to a generalized waste containment system. As we bring industries into Liberty County, we must make sure water is here first, not water coming after the industries come. Another one, other issue I would mention, we are leaving too much money on the table for grants which could help Liberty County improve and take the burden off of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I'll go next. I too would like to thank the Lord above, my heavenly Father, for the opportunity that he gives me to serve the citizens in all of Liberty County, but especially in District Three, since that's my district there, and I appreciate the opportunity that they give me and for voting me back in to office. And it's been a good tenure, and I hope it continues that way as we work together as a board to do what is right for all the citizens of Liberty County, not in just each person's district. There are many opportunities that we have, many challenges that we have to do better and to serve those in which we've been entrusted to serve with the monies that we have been entrusted to serve and to do what is right in spending that money. But it's with great pleasure that I'll sit back on the board and the other boards that I'm associated with, the Liberty County Health Department, Joy just, I was not expecting that last, at our last meeting about the property, and I was totally off guard with that, but I know that the citizens of Liberty County can't wait for that new facility to open. And there are other items on the works and in the books that we need to get taken care of, and I just appreciate all of our employees and for the administration for being in the trenches for us and helping us on a daily basis.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones is doing some R and R, so he's out tonight. Commissioner, give it.
Yes, sir. Thanks to Ms. Chairman, good afternoon, evening, everyone. I was just doing some counting here, but this starts my 15th year on the commission. I was elected in 2008, took office, first meeting in 2009, so this is year 15, beginning of year 15, when I left to come here, I told my wife that, you know, on this term, I got two more years, so I got, I told her after tonight, I have 47 meetings. Forty-seven. She said, wow, that's a lot, how did you get that number? I said, well, you're 24 times two minus the night, but I've enjoyed it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we've, I think that we are moving this county in the right direction. You've seen the growth, the things that we've been able to do because of renewing the sales tax referendum, you know, we're blessed to start another one, but when would that be? Next spring, Joy? Next spring? Yeah, April of this year? Okay, yeah, and that'd be splosh seven?
Seven.
Seven, you know, so, and, you know, you look at the growth, you know, especially on the East End, you know, the East End complex is happened, you know, during the time that I've been up here, across the street, the New Justice Center, the New City Hall, all the buildings that we've built with the power of the penny, as Commissioner Stevens liked to say, I used to say the red penny, he'd say the brown penny, but it doesn't really matter what color it is. And we got some more things to do, but the fire service, you know, we committed that we wanted a countywide fire department, and we are there. I mean, you go down toward Miller Park, and you see the construction of the new fire station. We got some on the, you know, around Isle of Wight, towards Sunberry, Gun Branch was constructed during, you know, during the time that I've been here, so, you know, we've made a lot of progress. And, you know, we agree almost all the time, and, you know, but even when we don't, you know, it's never personal, you know, we make decisions for what we think is best, and, you know, we'll vote, and then we'll move on, there are no hard feelings and no animosity. And I think we get along good, and I think that's one of the reasons that we can been able to do the things that we've been able to do. So I look forward to these next two years, and, you know, we'll, who knows what the future holds after this, but, you know, I've really enjoyed, and, you know, just want to, you know, thank God for his many blessings, for not only me and my family, but for all of us up here on this, on the set with this commission, the leadership that Mr. Brown and Mr. Mosley, our department heads meeting, the other elected officials, the people that depend on us to make sure that this county is well-run, and I really feel that it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walden?
Yeah, I just have to echo a lot of, some of the same statements there, but I'm like Commissioner Stevens, you know, we served under three different chairmans, and things changed all the way. I commend you, Mr. Lovett, we went to school together, and we're all doing what we feel like is the best. I know that my dad always told me that the easiest thing to do in a job like this is nothing, and he served with Commissioner Frazier's father, but, you know, you've got to be able to do something. It could be right, it could be wrong, but, you know, you're not going to make everybody happy, but we can do everything possible to be fair with one another. Just, a lot of people don't know how blessed they are. We're blessed here in this community with some resources that other counties don't have. We have the largest military installation east of the Mississippi River, which brings in a whole diverse group of people. The sales tax was mentioned. Before, we used to have sales tax that went only to certain folks, and we decided that we would, as a joint venture, divide it up, everybody got the same amount, and that helps me help someone, that lets that same person help me, and it's worked, I think, to the best benefit of the community. It's going to be a trying time in 2023, I honestly believe that, but we're going to make it, and with the leadership that's up here now, we're going to be able to complete the fire services, the EMS, and do what we have to to protect the citizens here in the community. Trent's working every day, his group is, on extending the water service into a lot of the rural area, and before you know it, they'll just want to know, well, we thought it was always there, but it's not, it takes a lot of time, a lot of work. I appreciate the many blessings and prayers that is given today and will continue to be for one another out here. So, again, just continue on.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll try to have your back.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier, we're just giving New Year's shout-outs, or words of...
All right, well, I'll be brief. Again, to my fellow Commissioners, the Chair, to all the hard-working individuals with the county, and also our citizens, I appreciate you all giving us another opportunity to serve you all in our different districts. I've had opportunity to listen to some of my fellow Commissioners, yes, we have done a lot. We've focused a lot on public safety. I remember when I first got up here, I guess it's 11 years now, we were trying to move forward with a countywide fire, and, you know, we ran into a few obstacles, but we're here now with that. I think we've done a great job with, we continue to focus on public safety, but also, I want us to challenge ourselves to not just focus on one thing, but focus on the bigger picture of Liberty County, moving us forward, and us being the progressive county that we are, and continue to be Liberty County proud, and make sure that we focus on making this community a place where we can live, work, and play, from the economic development standpoint, and putting our children first, because our children isn't just the future, they are present as well, and if we don't give them something to do, they will find something. And throughout this country, you know, we're going through a lot with our children, you know, from gangs, and I don't want people to think that we don't have them here in Liberty County, because they're here, drugs, fentanyl, overdosing, and everything else. So I want us to, I challenge not only myself, but the elected officials in this room, and elected officials all throughout Liberty County, to let's see what we could do to help our youth out a little bit more. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, all Commissioners, let's have a great year. At this time, we need to approve the minutes for the month of December.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to second, we approve the minutes for the month of December, any further discussion, they'd be shown by the, hands, show of hands, please. All right, minutes are approved. Moving right along, Department reports, LCPC, Mr. Jeff Rickerson. Seen you a lot lately, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. Our first item tonight is the second of two public hearings that we've had on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Mr. Chair, do we need to go into a public hearing?
We need to go into a public hearing, please just say that, please.
All right, Chair, ten motion, go to public hearing.
So move.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor, show of hands, please. All right, thank you.
Chairman, this is a note while we're on there, too. I forget the place it came in, but there was a sign-up sheet provided, anybody want to make a comment, any of the actions tonight, the lights for the land use plan, or the rezoning, but if you didn't get a chance, you can...
Are you ready?
Thank you, you can go ahead.
Okay, so what I wanted to do was just kind of give you a brief overview of our recommendation. This is, we've called this Resolution 2023-01, because it's your first resolution of the year 2023, but actually, we've been working on this for about four months, and I'll just kind of give you a little bit of the background, and we'll present the recommended amendment, and then we can proceed with the advertised public hearing that we've got tonight. You see here just a copy of the Comprehensive Plan that we, this thing is not working, so, I got a backup plan. This picture of the Comprehensive Plan, this is the 2016 Comprehensive Plan that is in effect, Liberty County has had comprehensive planning for the last 30 years, because it's been required by the state of Georgia, so dating back to the early 1990s, we've had a comprehensive plan, and our Comprehensive Plan has had the same basic minimum elements, because they haven't really changed a whole lot over the years. I think this is not working. Okay, so just to kind of give you a little bit of background of where we are and where we've been, on October the 4th, you'll recall, you had the first of the two required public hearings, this is required by state law in order to amend the Comprehensive Plan, you did that in this very room. Then we had two town hall meetings, one on October the 27th, at the Dorchester Village Civic Center, we had probably upwards of 100 people at that meeting, and then we had a follow-up meeting on December the 7th, or something, sorry, December the 8th, at the Dorchester Civic Center, we didn't have quite as many people at that meeting, thank you, quite as many people at that meeting as we did the first one, but we still had a very large crowd for both of those town hall meetings. Then on December the 20th, about two weeks ago, the Planning Commission had a public hearing in this room to take comments on, take comments on the proposed amendment before we bring it to you tonight. So what we're bringing you tonight has been blessed and recommended by the Planning Commission for your consideration. So tonight, we are having the second of those two required public hearings in order to do a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and in order to keep up with your six-month timeline that you gave us to get this amendment done, we will need to get that, transmit this to the CRC for State and Regional Review this week, in order to get that back in time for your March 7 deadline that you gave us. So that's just, we're kind of the timeline, and this is just the body of the resolution, just kind of gives all the wheress and therefor's, it basically says that we're going to replace sections of the old 2016 Comprehensive Plan with these new sections that I'm about to show you. And these are the proposed updates, the real meat of what we're talking about. On the left, you see the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, this is the character area maps, there's three things we're admitting, the character area maps, the future land use map, and the five-year work program. All these have been long-term elements of your Comprehensive Plan, but we're making recommended changes to each one of those. This is the existing character area map from the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, this is the recommended character area map that we're proposing here in January of 2023. Just to kind of give you, we've got some descriptions further back, and I'll kind of go into those, but just to kind of show you what we're talking about, the area that we've been tasked with studying is the area outlined in red here, this is, some people refer to this, to this as the blue map, but it's basically the area that's within about two and a half miles of Exit 76 here. You can see in 2016, a good bit of this area was shown as agricultural and forestry, and you can see here, we're recommending changes to those areas. The area above, along I-95 and above the Trayport East Industrial Area, which is this gray area here, was shown as ag forestry, now it's going to be, or we're recommending that it be, a town center, which is a mixed-use residential, that's in keeping with what the owner of the several thousand acres of land has indicated that they would like to see going forward, a mixture of residential, commercial, some retail, some office, and some, also some hospitality in this area. So they're looking at doing an integrated type of development, and the best, the best character area that we have in your Comprehensive Plan is a town center, which goes with that description. In addition, you see this big blue line going down the alignment of Islands Highway, that's the gateway character area, and we, that was not in the original 2016 plan, but we're recommending that that be in there, because that's an area that needs special care as we go forward with the future development, to make sure that the character, the overall rural character of Islands Highway is preserved. And the area down here below was also shown as agricultural forestry, a good bit of this was rezoned for industrial back in the spring, you might recall, this was an area that was talked about a couple of years ago as a possible casino, so this, the property owner has since that time come in and asked for industrial zoning, and it's been granted, so this area right here is already industrial, so really, what we're recommending is just filling in the interim area as shown by this map, as really what it is, is Regional Employment Center, that's what your Comprehensive Plan calls this area here. The next map is where we discuss the actual use, but this is the character area, this is a Regional Employment Center, and there's a more fulsome description in the Comprehensive Plan of this, this is a, what it describes as a Regional Employment Center, you can see the original footprint of Trayport East Industrial Park, and this is actually in the plan, this is unchanged, this is just what the description of what a Regional Employment Center is, it calls for using buffers to buffer these industrial and employment centers from the surrounding area, so that's the more full description of what the Regional Employment Center is. The next major area is the town center, that's the area above Trayport East and along 95 and along Jones Creek, this is a mixture of uses, and that's what we're recommending for that area, because that's in keeping with what the property owner and the developer has asked to do with that area. The next area is scattered residential, you'll see some areas in that, in that map that I showed you that are scattered residential, this is really the predominant use of the developed area in this Sunberry Islands area of the county, it's mostly scattered, single-family residential, not really any kind of planned subdivision, just, you know, on individual lots, and it's a varied type of housing, so that's in the current plan, and there's a good bit of area that's left out there that we're recommending stay as a scattered residential. And then natural conservation, we're all familiar with this area, it's got a lot of wetlands, a lot of marshlands, and it's very, this is a very prevalent character area in that Sunberry Islands area, and we're recommending, certainly recommending preservation of that. So those are the four basic character areas that we're looking at, and you can see those reflected on this map that we're talking about here, like just focusing on the red area, everything outside of this red area down here is left alone, we're leaving it just like it was in the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, but you can see here, this is the Regional Employment Center, you can see where it was in 2016, this is what we're recommending now, it's basically the original footprint of the Trayport East, plus this area down here as a Regional Employment Center, and then, of course, this area... And then of course, this area up here, again, that's the town center area, the mixed use development that we're talking about. And then down on the Dorchester Village Road, we're recommending that that be preserved as scattered residential, that other slide that I just showed you, which is basically what the, the current existing character of the area is. So that's, that's the character area map. The next thing that we want to update is the future land use map. Okay. And this is just a, kind of a big view from outer space of the, of the area. You can see here, I-95, the area, red area here is 76. You can see the, the comparison. All this area outside of the red area, the study area that we looked at is being left just like it was in 2016. So all of this area from about the 2.5 mile all the way to the water's edge is just exactly like it was in 2016. So this is the area that we focused on and I'm going to show you a blow up map just to show you what we're recommending changing. This is the current 2016 comprehensive plan that's in effect now. You can see that this industrial footprint here is the, the, the original footprint of Trayport East. And this area above that was shown, they were recommending as town center in the character area. That was shown as ag forestry. And then this area below, down here between Islands Highway and Dorchester Village Road is also shown as ag forestry. And then we just had a little bit of an area immediately around 76 that was shown for commercial. So going forward, this is the proposed. You can see the original footprint of Trayport East that was in the 2016. We're recommending adding the area that you've recently rezoned down here for Newport. And we're also recommending adding this area here. You've already rezoned this area back in the spring for Laurel View, recommending adding this area here between the, almost down to Brigden Road and back to the area that you already rezoned as industrial. But we're also recommending that this area, this Dorchester Village corridor here be remain, remain as a ag forestry and low density residential. So we're trying to preserve the integrity of that existing character there along that road. We're showing this area up here that we call town center in the character area on the future land use, the appropriate designation for that would be mixed use. And that would allow for that mixture of uses that we're talking about as far as residential hotels, commercial restaurants and, and retail. And so that, that's the, that's, that's both the character areas and the land use areas. The last area that we want to look at is the five year work program. Some folks asked when we first started talking about this, is this something new? This has been in our comprehensive plan in some form over the last 30 years and required by the state to update it every five years. So this is, since you were getting into some things as far, as part of this amendment that was like road improvements, like Islands Highway is proposed to be widened to accommodate some of the, some of the land use changes. So that needed to be updated. So there are some things in here that were updated while we're, while we were at it, like number one, developing a deep water access at Colonel's Island. That was already in there. It's kind of slipped a little bit into the future. It was supposed to be done during 21 through 23 and now it's been, we're, we're just kicking that out to 24 and 25. Going to the next one, expanding the EMA 911 building. We're showing that as 20, 23 to 25. Building a new fire station at Muller Park, that was scheduled for 22 to 23. It's underway and so it'll, it'll be done before 2024. So we're just making that correction as well. Implementing the county fire plan, I heard you talking about that earlier tonight. That's, that, that'll be done by the end of 2024. So we're just taking off that extra year there because it'll be completed. Renovating the road department building, was supposed to get started in 2024, has been pushed out to 2023 and, I mean, it's supposed to get started in 2022, been pushed out to 2023 and 2024. Building the new walking trail at the East End Government Complex was supposed to be done in 2021. You're kicking that out to 2023. Expansion of the rural water system, that's underway now. It was supposed to be, you, you originally planned to have that done in 21, 22. So it's been pushed back a little bit from 23, 24, and then 25 been added there. The freight connector, that's finally underway. They've, they've gotten just about all the right away. They need to get started on the construction of that. It was slated for each year, but we pushed it out to, we kicked it out the, the final year to 2025 because it's going to take that long to get that built. Sidewalk improvements from Highway 84, on Highway 84 from Flemington to Liberty County High School, thanks to T-Sploß, that's underway. You can see the barrels out there and see that in progress now. So it's not, it was originally thought to take until 24, 25, but it's going to be completed this year. The two things that are most pertinent to the amendment that we're considering as far as the land use and the, the character areas that we talked about earlier is the widening of Islands Highway from I-95 ramp to just past Brigden Road. And that's to accommodate the additional anticipated traffic associated with the, with the expansion of the industrial areas in and around the Trayport East area. That's an expensive project. It's going to be undertaken by both HAMPO and the Liberty County Board of Commissioners. It's a $25 million project. You're going to hear a little bit more about that later on in the night when you're talking about your development agreements from Mr. Long and Mr. Davis. But that's a $25 million project. It's going to be paid for by a combination of G dot local funds and developer funds. And you're going to hear more about the developer agreement part. That's going to be a large portion of getting that paid for. And then the final thing is safety improvements on eight, on US 84 between Charlie Butler Road and I-95. And we're looking at doing those between 2023 and 2025. And that's a price tag of 12.6 million dollars. And that's going to be paid for with the G dot and local funds as well. I think that's it. So we're now down to the, you can ask me some questions or if not, we can go ahead and move into the public comment period.
I don't have any for you, sir, commissioners. You have any questions, but Jeff, before he opens it up to the public for their, and we'll come back.
Come back.
I will, Chairman, before I sit down, I will, I will point out that we received as part of our, our extensive public process, we received 87 comments and 49 letters that we have shared with you. We also shared them with the Planning Commission before they voted. So I just wanted folks that are, are listening to know that we have shared, if you, if you participated in our online or came to one of our meetings and submitted forum, all those comments have been presenting, presented to the board.
I guess you might as well go ahead and share the, the Planning Committee's vote for this, how they voted.
Yes, sir. The Planning Commission did have a split vote. They, they voted five to three in favor of recommending what was presented to you for approval.
Thank you, sir.
This is for the, the signing sheet. And just a reminder, each presenter gets three minute, one three minute period each and needs to address the chairman. And the first person is Mr. Wade Zettler.
Gary, how do you get this chair to lean back? This is Zettler. State your name when you come to the mic, please, sir, for, for record.
Wade Zettler.
Zettler.
I live down on subdivision called The Trails off, in Fleming. We came in here and discussed a matter with our county commissioner and we was informed that we had a road problem and it was our responsibility. We understand that and the drainage. But some things have taken place last year and now as we speak that is not allowing, if it continues and nobody does anything about it, which I mean, we don't, I mean, y'all are the ones with the power. And people have filled in a watershed ditch that drains our community. And there's a piece of property, we all, all, me and my neighbors understood with wetlands. And it looks like it might be filled in, but that piece of land plays a big, big part on how the water drains in our community.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could pause. Mr. Zettler, this is a public hearing related to the comprehensive land plan? And, and that's?
I, I didn't know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. So maybe we, maybe we can, I'd be glad to get with you after the meeting or if you want to give me your phone number while the next person speaks, I'll be glad to give you a call.
I, I wasn't going to stop and Joe, I was going to, I was going to tell him that, sir, we can hear what you're saying, it's just for a different, yeah. But don't, hold on to your comments there, Mr. Zettler.
The next person is Ms. Ashley Mosher.
Ms. Mosher, same thing, say your name for the matter of record, please, ma'am.
Of course. Ashley Mosher. So happy new year, commissioners.
Happy new year.
So here we are once again. My, my, you've heard our complaints, you've heard our concerns. I have a couple of problems and you probably know them well. But my question is, when we've done the comprehensive study between the Liberty Planning, the Liberty County Planning Commission, and they've done the community outreach and everything, there have been questions that have been asked, but there have been no answers. So I'm coming to you today and in light of this, there's not been any information that's given to the public or to the concerned citizens for these questions that we've asked. So my comment is today, instead of asking for this to be voted on and sent forward and that kind of stuff, why can't there be a forum in which the, something put online in which all of these questions that were asked by all of your constituents and everybody that's concerned, why aren't those questions answered in some shape, form, or fashion so that we have that information, so that we could be supportive? And we could say, okay, we're okay with this, or this is why they're doing this so that we have a better understanding? Because right now, it seems like we're just banging our heads against the wall and we're doing the same thing every month that we come in here. So something has to change. We don't want to feel defeated. You want to feel like you're moving forward and being progressive for Liberty County. So we have to do something different. So I'm standing here saying, what are we going to do different so that we come to a happy medium between your constituents and the people who are concerned and you, the commissioners, who hold the key to our future and to our city? And, and that's what I'm asking. Is, is, could there be another public forum? Is there something that could be put online? I mean, it's always been done this way and this is the proper way to do it, but we have to be forward thinking, progressive, and we have to change things up how we do it in order to satisfy everything. And you can tell that this becomes a very emotional thing for us because it's where we live. And I think that everything gets so heated, you forget that. You know, and, and Mr. Levitt, I've commented, what happens when my yard floods? What happens? We take it to your commissioner. But then what is he going to do? He's just one man. And he works with all of you. What happens when these things happen? What happens when the warehouse is no longer useful? What do we do? And those questions haven't been answered or there haven't been anything put out by you, our leaders, to sustain and to satisfy the questions that have been answered. So you might vote yesterday, but know that you need to answer these questions and you can't leave it to one man. You can't leave it his responsibility to figure out the problems that we all foresee coming or that we're not happy about. You can't make everybody happy and you said that. There's no animosity, there's no, but you can help us understand where you're coming from. And you can help us understand the bigger picture. And that's what I'm asking for.
Time's up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all of you and happy new years to all of you too. And, you know, I've been up here time and time again and I have many concerns, everything from, you know, the air, the traffic. I keep looking at, you know, Islands Highway, having four lanes, that might help. But now I'm seeing four to five entrances coming in from the side where Trayport East is. And if, you know, blue scope is allowed, there's already just from the 150 some acres they're asking to rezone, going to be two coming, coming from the other side. None of us can figure out how on earth we're supposed to get out of our homes and over the overpass with all of that truck traffic. And it's not just truck traffic. You know, you're having restaurants put, I mean, you know, the fast food things and this and that, there's going to be people coming off the interstate. I mean, how are we supposed to get out? And we're saying, you know, we get told, oh, there's going to be a traffic light. Well, a couple of traffic lights is just going to back everything up. I mean, already, when people are coming in to work at Trayport East and going out to work on Trayport East, it's very difficult for us to get out. I cannot imagine when you've got 10, 15, 20,000 vehicles coming in and out of there. There needs to be a lane, a designated lane for first responders because there's no way that police, fire, EMS, ambulances are going to be able to get out to us with all of this traffic. And I don't think that's even been considered. So hopefully something can, can be done with that. And, you know, all of you are in a position of public trust. And I think, you know, just like we just recently said, there are massive flooding, massive flooding out there. There are, you know, all these concerns and they're not being brought out. And all of us are concerned too. Every year, we were told when Trayport came out there that, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars are going to be coming in the county. It's going to be wonderful. And what's happened over and over and over again, all we get is our taxes raised. And I'm looking at these expenses, expenses now. I mean, is that where you're planning on getting the money, raising our taxes again? And I said at the last LP CP meeting that, that we went to, that every single district should be donating sploß funds for this. You keep telling us this is for the whole county, the whole county's going to benefit. Well, then every single district needs to have sploß funds going into this so the taxpayers aren't getting, you know, smacked on the face again. It's getting to the point where, you know, you just, you can't keep, can't keep doing this all the time, keep raising it from the taxpayers when, I mean, you know, none of us out there want this. So I just, I want you to consider that about where the money's going to come from when you keep saying the county has to do its share because I don't feel it's right that it keeps coming back on the, the taxpayers. And so, you know, just hopefully, please just be considerate of us. I mean, you know what all our, you know, all our concerns are and everything, but I am very concerned about getting first responders out there. I'm an old lady, I've got a brand new great grandson that's going to be born, there are kids out there. And that's another major concern because my great granddaughter has to stand right on Islands Highway to catch the bus. What are we going to do to protect those children when all this traffic is out here? I mean, we don't even have streetlights in the morning, it's pitch black. Parents stand out there with flashlights when the kids are catching the bus. There are things that need to be done before these businesses should be allowed to be built and, I mean, allowed to, you know, start doing their, their businesses and so forth. Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Ms. April Lewis.
I have nothing under, or so this is.
Oh, it's for the other, okay. That, that concludes it, Mr. Chairman.
Includes it.
Ms. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Rickerson. The map that you showed, did you tell us it was like two and a half miles from the exit toward Sunberry?
Yes, ma'am.
Roughly, is the, is the?
Two and a half.
From this?
Roughly, two and a half?
Yeah, from, from, from this exit ramp here down to the end of this area is about two and a half miles.
Okay. I know where Brigden Road is, but are there like residential right on Islands Highway within that two and a half mile quarter?
There, there is some scattered residential down in this area right here. And of course, there is some existing residential along Dorchester Village over here as well.
Right. But just on Islands Highway, that there's, it's kind of scattered on the one side?
That's right. They're, they are backing up to the existing area of Trayport East.
Right, okay.
Nothing new.
Chair.
Done?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Ms. Chair, for me, I got, just, I need Mr. Long to clarify something for me.
Mr. Long. If you recall, at both of the public hearings, the question was asked on the traffic count. Can you update us on the traffic?
Yes, sir. You have in your packet there, I want to discuss how we generated some of our stuff. It has some information on it as far as traffic counts go. It also has a whole bunch of information of how we generated what our proposed impact fees or non-impact fees, our traffic assessment would be handled. So, and I'll get into that a good bit in my part of the presentation.
So you have the answers to two questions to traffic?
Now, the, the traffic study is not finished and the traffic study won't be really ready to publish until the end of January. But we, we have stuff enough that we are able to generate what fees are going to be in and how to distribute the fees to pay for what we're trying to do.
Join you and Jeff, where's the water going to come from?
The water?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, don't have all the answers for the water yet. I know that development, that is in the Development Authority Water Service Delivery Area, and, uh, they're working on trying to get their water resources available for what's trying to come. Uh, a little portion of it is in the Midway Water Service Delivery Area. Uh, we did have some meetings, uh, about before Christmas with several of the mayors, trying to talk about how we're going to get water to the Midway Area to service some of the areas that are coming from Midway.
How's that coming along, working with the other mayors on the water?
Right now, the mayors are talking amongst themselves, and then I think this month we're gonna try to get back together. Uh, I think when we left last time, that the, uh, mayors wanted to talk to their councils about, uh, the progress and some of the ideas we discussed, uh, before they went back and talked jointly between the cities. So right now, it's in the, the hands of the mayors.
'Cause I, I, I'll say this, Ms. Chair, I had a conversation with one of the mayors, and it's like, it's right here, there's some fence need to be mended with some of these municipalities to make sure everything go better than what it's going now, you know, for us to get that water. So we have to watch who we send out there to go n- negotiate this water.
Yes, sir. Uh, that came out loud and clear in those meetings.
I am aware of that. So, uh, now, where's the water, where's the runoff water going? Do you have, do we have?
So we don't have a master drainage plan in that area, other than what we did, uh, several years ago. Now, uh, there are several drainage ways and basin areas, and all the development's gonna be required to, uh, meet the stormwater retention requirements that we have in our current ordinances. As a matter of fact, that's one of the reasons that Dorchester Village Road Relocation has stalled, is 'cause they haven't been able to provide to me the drainage and how they're handling the drainage on that yet. So, yes, sir, we're, we're trying to make sure that everybody is one hundred percent meeting the drainage ordinance, so that we don't adversely impact their neighbors.
So, Mr. Rickerson, how can these concerns, will these concerns be entered into, what I just, the issues that I just mentioned, will they be entered into that, to the, the plan that you had, have, or it's too late?
I think these concerns have to be handled on a case-by-case, uh, basis. Uh, when you get a new, one, one of these, uh, new, uh, buildings comes in, or new development comes in, they're gonna have to be reviewed by Trent and, uh, the county staff to make sure that they're meeting the, the drainage requirements of the ordinance. And of course, to your water point, if the, if the water capacity is not there, then they just won't get, it won't get permitted. I, I wish I could say that Liberty County and all of the cities are, have all the water they need to support development for the next twenty years, but they just don't, and they're all having to work on it, and it was, Huntsville just recently made a big jump, uh, in, in getting theirs, and Rashboro, uh, made some great strides a few years ago, and now the rest just need to kinda work together to make, to make that happen. This is gonna be a work in progress.
Now, my last concern is going past Brigden Road. 'Cause you think about the house on the right, think about the other house on the left, and the cemetery. So actually, your plan is gonna, that plan, what we're looking at is gonna take us past Brigden Road, right? It's gonna put us...
Just pass Brigden Road. Uh, Brig, Brigden Road is where, uh, as Trent said at the meeting, and I was, I'm getting in your lane, but, uh, that's where the road starts to taper down. He said this is a sixty mile an hour road, and you've got to taper it down, you can't just go from four to two.
Yeah, so basically, what we start doing is, I don't know if I can see it, right here at Brigden Road, we start tapering down back to a two-lane. The, uh, piece that just got rezoned right there, will come back on ML Clover Court, and you'll access that way, so past Brigden Road, there won't be any more industrial access to Island's Highway.
So that would end the industrial situation going down, going down Island's Highway?
Yes, sir.
But it could come back up Trade Port, what was that road called, Mr. Chairman, Trade Port East, the road?
Yes, so, you know, so basically, what's gonna happen in, in, and if we don't mind, I'm gonna probably leave this, get back to this map when we get ready to do my part. But, you know, you've got all the development, that's the original industrial park that's going in there, then you got the piece, uh, forum group that did warehouses here, you got the warehouses that are going right there, that were already approved, that, uh, where Dorchester Village Road is being relocated, uh, the one that's still on the table now, and the one that came over here. So what we're able to do, and this is a large, you'll see like Exhibit One, on the information I left on your desk, um, it shows a lot of commercial in this area, it shows a lot of residential all up in here. So that's where the LCPC is showing the mixed use. That's gonna be your big generator of traffic, is this pink area here, more so than what this gray area is. So when you start looking at it, that's what's gonna generate a lot of your traffic.
If you don't mind, between the two of y'all, bounce back. This still does not want a control traffic light.
Yes, there will be a traffic light.
There will be a traffic light, where at the entrance going into Trade Port East.
So, right now, we've got one plan where Dorchester Village Road hits. We're most likely gonna need one right there as well, but I think further back, we won't, 'cause the traffic starts peeling, the traffic counts really start dropping when she, this is your main area of impact right here. Back here, it's a lot less. Now, you gotta stop and think, the, uh, the warehouses don't produce as much traffic as, um, homes.
But now, if I hear you correctly, you're just saying right here is gonna be a traffic light, and right back here, coming out with the Dorchester Village?
Yeah.
Isn't that, isn't that gonna be too close?
Definitely the one right there, and I am ninety-five percent sure we're gonna have one right there.
Isn't that gonna be too close together to cause a traffic, a traffic problem?
They're a quarter mile apart.
Okay.
So they meet the standard.
Okay. And remember the length of the tractor trailer, the trailers is what, fifty-three feet, the tractor, tractor itself is apart twenty, so just keep that in mind.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So one reason that, that we're not ready to present the traffic study is because what we're doing is we're taking the numbers that we have, and we're running computer simulations of the traffic. So, you know, we're looking hard at this intersection, then we look at this intersection, and you, we have to make what-if adjustments here, then see how it affects that, then you make what-if adjustments there, then you kinda have to go back and forth with the what-ifs, and, you know, what, right now, we have several places where we have dual-left turns, dual-right turns, and most of that is gonna happen in this first quarter-mile segment right there.
Okay.
That's where our bigger act, impact is gonna be.
All right.
So, and you know, and part of what we do is we look at the signal timing, how long you leave it, which way you leave it, and how long your queue lines are, and how many people you can queue in the line, and, and what your delays are at these red lights, so that you can get an acceptable level of service.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, y'all, we had to sign, you, you had your time to, to sign up.
Look, I was gonna ask you a question.
Yes, you, you can get with him after the meeting, or, or, so that, that's, all right, any of the Commissioners?
No, I was just gonna ask you a question, Ms. Chairman, that, I don't know how far we're gonna go with this, um, Jeff, but the, uh, Thomason Hutton does the engineering inside the park, correct?
That's correct.
And the bridge that we're talking about, um, over I-95?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in the city of Midway?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm, what part are they gonna play in?
Federal, yeah.
Okay, so, but, I'm sorry, Jeff, I don't mean to be taking it. But what we've already done on that particular item is, you know, we, we came up with a couple of suggestions, and we have talked to, uh, a lot of folks with DOT, our DOT Di-, uh, District Chairperson, Ann Purcell, all of our representatives, saying, hey, we need to do something for this, uh, bridge, 'cause we need additional lanes across there. You know, that bridge is getting older, we need to do something about the intersections. One of the things that they did ask us to do, which you guys did last month, was authorize, uh, set to enter into, uh, to get a traffic assessment, traffic impact assessment, TIA, done on the intersection of I-95 and Island's Highway. You know, so that says, okay, this is what's gonna happen based on what's happening here, and how that impacts this intersection, and then what's happening on the west side, and what we see coming from the, uh, west side, and put all that into a report, and Department of Transportation asked us to give that as a seed to start that process or take that process to the next step, because, you know, that's gotta come along with what we're trying to do on Island's Highway to make all this work.
Right, I, and, and the gentleman that was here that had talked about the, the part there that's in the pink, or whatever that is, you know, he had mentioned about his vision for what he wanted to do, and he was gonna, I guess, uh, talk with the, the state about actually trying to get a, a way out onto the interstate on, out of that subdivision. Now, whether he can or he can't, I don't know, if he don't try, he won't, he won't ever be able to, but...
I, I tell you, that one thing that will be wonderful for us to figure out at some time, at some point in time, I'm sorry that I'm, my sinuses are really messed up, my allergies got me, and I'm having trouble talking loud, so I apologize. But, you know, ultimately, we do need another way to get over I-95 and back onto the, the west side of I-95, 'cause, you know, everybody on that end has to funnel through that one little section right there. So, you know, if ultimately, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, we find a way that we can get a, a bridge over it, or we can get another way to cross back and forth, that would be ideal. You know, right now, we've gotta focus on what we've got and keep that in the background that we do need that. So I, I don't think anybody denies that we need an, another route to get over I-95 desperately. And we need more lanes across I-95 now.
Well, I mean, when you, when you look at that, and you even look at what's in McIntosh, you got one way to get over that. And I venture to say that the traffic over that overpass is far more exceeds the count that you got on the Island's Highway, right?
Which, which, which way are you talking about?
McIntosh Mountain, here in town?
Do what?
Talking about McIntosh Mountain here in town?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's got a pretty good high traffic count.
Well, I mean, so we got Hutton working inside the park, is that true, Ms. Chairman? And then you gonna be on the outside of the park?
And we've got Atlas working on I-95 for us.
So y'all've all decided y'all gonna work together on it, Trent?
Yes, sir.
Or if it comes to reality?
I don't, I don't, I, I couldn't do it all by myself. So there's no way I could do it all by myself.
Okay. That's all I got, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
I wanna make a statement, I've been doing a lot of listening, and I, I wrote it down so I wouldn't try not to miss anything, but after sitting through, um, each public hearing and each town hall, I've been to every one of them, it's allowed me to hear and digest a lot of information, misinformation, professional and non-professional presentations, respect and disrespect for the public hearing process. This commission, being led by staff recommendations and after meeting with Ms. Marsha Hamilton and others, made the decision to create an area in adjacent to Trade Port East that included Trade Port East and those development products that had expressed their desire for consideration, those that I say were kinda in the heart priority. In fairness to the developers and the citizens living in that immediate area and those living east of Trade Port East, this commission, right here, drew the boundary lines of the map that Jeff showed. Nothing outside of those lines would be considered for industrial development. We sat and we discussed, and we had meetings with jury about that. Talks had already gone on with one developer who was willing to make concessions for buffers, partially paved road, Dorchester Village Road, plan for commercial development, which citizens were asking for, and would offer to, and would offer future public access to riverfront property open to everybody. A second developer, who had already donated property for a future boys and girls club, was also willing to increase their vegetative buffer, am I right? A third developer also made the offer to increase their buffer along Brigden Road, am I right?
Right.
The engineering firms, Commissioner Walton just touched on that, for the Development Authority and our engineer, have, have both said that Trade Port East, and if I'm wrong, you correct me, is not the cause of any present flooding along Island Highway. Furthermore, Mrs. Jeff Rickerson, who I applaud for his management of these hearings, educated citizens time and time again on the local and state requirement for stormwater detention that must be adhered to, am I right? Our county fire captain, who has met with a group of citizens to discuss fire services, has given them and me the assurance, our fire department, based on conditions, each fire is different. Our fire department is adequately prepared to provide fire protection. In fact, over the past few years, they've already had to do that out in Trade Port East. I've been in conversation with Stacy Watson, Director of Economic and Industrial Development of the Georgia Ports Authority. Stacy said that with a truck traffic of fifteen thousand trucks a day at Georgia Ports, there are no violations when it comes to cost of genitons and emissions at Georgia Ports, fifteen thousand a day, no violations. The subject of how many Liberty County citizens are employed at industrial parks and employers like DS Smith and SNF has been raised. Please allow me to inform you that Liberty County citizens are parked at Gulf Stream, JCB, Hunter Armory Airfield, and the Georgia Ports Authority, named just a few. In fact, when industry looks to locate to a community, they target a fifty-mile radius of the site for employees. I promise you the new mega-site, built with the state of Georgia incentives, and Bullock, and Bryan, and Chatham County monies, located in Bryan County, where employ people from a fifty-mile radius to include Liberty County and as far away as South Carolina. Speaking of incentives, Commissioner Frazier, you're well aware of the incentives we gave to build the Chick-fil-A Shopping Center. That has proven to be one of the biggest investments in Liberty County, when you include the surrounding developments that came as a result of that shopping center. In fact, I'm proud to announce the negotiations to build an even larger shopping center as we speak, as a direct result of the sales of establishments at the Chick-fil-A Shopping Center, I just call it that. Speaking of investments, we now have the opportunity to make an investment at our interchange in Midway and in and around Trade Port East. Our community leaders made a decision three to four years ago to work to develop this low-producing interchange. The exit on I-95 in Richmond Hill produces more than sixty to seventy percent of their sale tax revenue in Bryan County, in all of Bryan County, from that one exit. It's time we take advantage of our exit. Infrastructure was not always at the interchange in Richmond Hill, but they added it as they needed. What's the difference? So listen, infrastructure is not there now, I agree, but nor is the development there now. I promise you, the requests are to seek the funding on state and federal levels, like they just said. I can report that the local efforts on water, you mentioned that, is, is a very positive, is moving on very positively about working with this, with the mayors to work on the water situation, very positive. As, as recent as today, a very positive conversation that I didn't ask what came to me from one of the mayors. Since our last meeting, there's been announcement to build a travel center on the west side of interchange in Midway, unsolicited. This is only the beginning. We can either embrace it, Commissioners, or we can let the progress pass us by. So I'm at peace with moving forward. Two-point-three miles, two-point-five miles, you said. And after that, those citizens who, and we are here to protect it, and work with everybody, after that, you either get in I-95, south or north, when you're right into truck traffic. There's nowhere around it on I-95. Listen, so the growth won't happen, as you have very well said, if the water supply is not there, then the growth won't happen, so you don't have to worry about it. is not there, then the growth won't happen, so you don't worry about it, it won't happen until it gets there. So it's not like we pilot in now just to make it happen without having infrastructure there. Without that, it won't happen. But I'm at peace with moving forward, knowing that there's still heavy lifting to do. But if not us, who? If not now, when? The keys are in our hands. I think we need to move forward. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, one, one thing I do need y'all to do, in, in order to adopt the amendment to the plan, you need to, Trent, y'all need to authorize the chairman to transmit this to CRC. They, they have, CRC and the state have to review this and comment back on it before you can take action as you scheduled for March, so I, I do need, I do need that action to authorize the chairman to submit this so it can go forward.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
So if we authorize the chairman, we're not saying I'm against it, it's just the procedure of it. We authorize the chairman to sign off on it. That would be our last input.
This, o- 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 in order to approve any kind of adopt a plan or amend a plan, you have to submit it to CRC and the state to review. You don't have to adopt it after that, but in, in order to do that, in order to even consider adopting it, you got to submit it to them, so it's part of the state law.
What I'm going back after is a couple of things that I mentioned. Where will they be on the outside or inside this plan? And you may have answered that all ready, about the water and everything, where's the runoff or whatever.
The, the, the water and the sewer is not part of this, this plan amendment that we're talking about here, that's, that's something that's got to be worked on individually by the jurisdictions.
Does, does a plan have notes? Uh, I mean, certainly we got all the, uh, recommendations that have been sent to us, but does a plan itself have notes in it or is it just the plan?
It's, the, the plan is two hundred and fifty pages of the original two thousand sixteen document with these proposed changes. Uh, we'll, we'll pull out the old and we'll stick in the new and it'll be the same big two hundred and fifty page plan with these changes that I just covered for you tonight.
Yeah, I think I go back again, Commissioner Stevens, you know, without the water and sewer, it won't happen.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I want everybody to understand, I'm not saying I'm against, I just, I'm just asking questions about the infrastructure, to see where it's at.
All right. I'm, I'm glad this is moving forward, but, but without it, it won't happen? All right, Chairman Tatum?
What, what do you need, Jeff, a motion?
We need to authorize the chairman to transmit this to CRC for state and regional review.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
I wanna make sure that you willing to do it, Mr. Chairman?
Let's move, let's go. Let's go.
If you need some help?
Let's go.
Just ask for it.
We get to make an investment in Liberty County's future that could be a game changer for our county, just like the Chick-fil-A shopping center.
Well, if, if you don't think the chairman is ready to move forward, can, can you read that again?
Yeah, we're ready. All in favor, show your hands, please. Unanimously, thank you, sir.
Thank you, we'll, we'll get it.
Appreciate that, Commissioner, I think you will not regret that. You'll never regret that.
No, it won't be me, it will be the citizens, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
That's all I'm doing, asking question, I wanna make sure that was quite, that's all I was doing, asking questions.
Chair, again, my stance was, was a never against economic development, I think you know how, how I felt about it since I moved back from Atlanta twelve years ago. But I am, and I will always be concerned about how we do it.
That's right, and you should.
It's not what we do, it's, but it's how we do it, and make sure that we have a, a real strategic plan to move forward.
One of the things...
Not just for today, but for twenty years from now, when none of us might not be sitting up here. And it's a whole new commission looking at the issues that, that we created. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we're just, you know, crossing our t's and dotting our i's.
E- even, and we move on, but even, um, the townhouses and all that, man, that was a twenty-year build-out plan, it won't happen tomorrow.
That's right.
It'll give us lots of time to work on infrastructure. Yeah. All right, sir.
All right, Chairman, the next, I got three more, LCPC action items before I sit down and shut up, but the first one...
We're starting a public hearing. We'll have to go back in for rezoning, but we'll come, if we can come out this time.
Just direct, sir.
I'm sorry.
Motion to come out of public hearing, back in regular session?
So move.
Second, I hear second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, all right, back in the regular session, thank you, sir.
Okay, Chairman, members of the commission, this is a request that's very similar to a couple that you've had in the past. This is Josh Wheeler, doing business as J Wheeler Properties LLC. He's found some more lots, some more existing old platted lots in the Isle of Wight community that he'd like to build on. Uh, these lots are substandard, they only have a sixty feet of frontage, and he's trying to put a regular house in those, so he's wanting to reduce the required fifteen foot setback down to fi- down to ten feet setback. And this property is located at three ninety Main Street and Midway, and you can see the parcel numbers there. That's a picture of the sign, you can see there's a dirt road, and you can see the ad and the Coastal Courier. And this is the old plat from nineteen sixty, you can see all the other lots in here, this one right here is lots number ninety-five and ninety-six, they were combined for tax purposes, but they're still two individually platted lots, and each one has sixty feet of frontage. And that's just a little bit closer, uh, uh, picture there, just showing the two lots and the, the line going between. And as you see the zoning here, uh, this property is zoned R two, single family residential. And this is the flood map, you can see that, uh, the, the blue area here represents the zone A, this area is completely outside the flood plain, so that's not an issue here. Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Wheeler's request, he's requesting a variance for the property located here at, uh, three ninety Main Street to reduce setbacks to ten feet on the sides. There are two lots, ninety-five and ninety-six, included in one tax parcel, it's, it's one, one tax parcel that was, uh, combined for tax purposes, there's still two individually platted lots in the clerk's office. Um, and both, and they're asking for a variance for both of these lots. So, uh, the conditions that you have to use in order to consider granting these, uh, these lots are conceptual, are, I'm sorry, they're exceptional because they have a lot width of only sixty feet, which makes it a little bit of a tight squeeze to build a standard house on it. R two requires a lot width, uh, currently, currently R two requires a lot width of eighty feet. Uh, would this application, uh, create a particular, would the application of the appendix create a particular unnecessary hardship? Uh, our answer there is no, a single family could conceivably be constructed, it wouldn't be, maybe, wouldn't be a standard house, but they could build a skinny house in there and meet the fifteen foot setback. Uh, next condition, uh, such conditions are peculiar to this piece of property, no, they're not, uh, there are many others, as you saw on that plat earlier, there are many others of these substandard lots in this particular subdivision. And then the final point that we note there is that relief would not cause any detriment if you were to grant this variance, and you, as I pointed out, you've already approved two of these in the past. And LCPC heard this at their December twentieth planning commission meeting, and, uh, they recommend standard, uh, approval with standard conditions. Uh, I will tell you, I, I know Mr. Fraser's gonna ask this question, uh, why don't y'all fix this problem? It is fixed in the Unified Development Ordinance, and that is scheduled to come to y'all in the next month or so, and it's, it's all, we're also circulating it to the other cities as well, so if y'all in the other cities adopt that Unified Development Ordinance, this won't be a problem anymore because the setback for R two will be reduced to ten feet for everybody.
Take that box off.
Absolutely.
So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chair? Need a motion on that?
Right.
Yes, sir. I need to drag around?
Mr. Rickson, I mean, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation from LCPC?
Second.
Second, further discussion, in favor, show your hands, please. We moving on, Mr. Rickerson?
Thank you, sir. Our next request is a special exception request, which is a conditional use, um, this is a, uh, some, some folks who want to build a winery on K Creek Road in a ru- in a rural area that's zoned A one. Uh, this, uh, request was submitted by April and Stephen Lewis on beha- on behalf of Faith Landmark Ministries, uh, who's the property owner. They wanna do a vineyard, which is per- perfectly fine in a agricultural area, they wanna incorporate some short-term rentals, an event center, and a kitchen in that. So, the, the uses they're wanting to do kinda go with the agricultural use, but we brought it to you as a special exception because they are wanting to do the short-term rentals and the, uh, the, uh, event center on the property.
In Liberty County.
Again, this is located on, in an agricultural zoned area on K Creek Road. Uh, here's our sign, you can see K Creek Road, you know that's a dirt road as well, uh, our ad in the Coastal Courier. Uh, this is just a plat of the property, the area back here is in the marsh, so this is really the, the usable land up here, and that's K Creek Road there. And this is just another shot from the aerial view, you can see the marsh down here, uh, the usable land up here, K Creek Road. There's a total of twenty-eight acres, twenty acres in the upland part, and then eight acres down here in the marsh area. And that's just a picture of the zoning map, as I pointed out, this, this area is zone A one, which is agricultural zone. And this is the flood map, just showing the, uh, front part of the property there along K Creek is in the flood zone, uh, the middle of the property here is not in the flood zone, and then, of course, the marsh is definitely in the flood zone. The narrative, uh, kind of, if you'll just bear with me, I'll kinda tell you what they're wanting to do, they're wanting to, uh, develop the property for residential, agricultural, and commercial use. The residential use would be, they wanna build a two-bedroom residence on the property and four small one-bedroom residences for family and guests. Uh, it's agricultural, the agricultural portion of this is four to five acres worth of grapevines, and they also wanna have two to three acres worth of, worth of various fruit trees, blackberry and blueberry bushes, and a quarter acre or, you know, point two-five acre garden. So that's, that's the big picture of what they're wanting to do here. The commercial use here is that they would like a special exception to allow for the following commercial use. They wanna build the, uh, again, they wanna build the, the four, four small rental cabins, the event center, a winery, and a wine production facility. Total commercial space will be roughly three acres, including the parking. The rental cabins, applicants wish to build four, twenty feet by twenty feet wide, so it's not a real big cabin, it's really, uh, you know, four hundred square feet cabin, which is above the minimum, uh, for a dwelling in Liberty County, uh, to be rented for short-term stays. Uh, this part of the project, uh, they're anticipating that will be completed within two years from the purchase of the property. The wine production, uh, facility part of it, uh, they anticipate their wine production to be about twenty gallons of wine per year for use on, for use on the property and sale at the on-site winery and event center. Uh, this part of the project, they're expecting to have within two, within three years of the purchase of the property. And then, of course, the, the event center is a, is a thirty by fifty building with a wraparound ten-foot deck on it, and they're wanting to, uh, have that available to rent for wedding reception and bridal showers and business events. Uh, this will have a small kitchen with ADA compliant restrooms, uh, customers will need to hire catering and rent, uh, whatever equipments and tables and fixtures that they will need to have their event. Uh, this, this, the event center is expected to be completed within six years of purchase of the property. Uh, spent, the requirements for the special exception, uh, the ordinance provides for a specially, specially designated, and this ordinance would not be, uh, that would not be appropriate for a location generally or without restriction through a given zoning district, but which, if it controlled as to the number, area, location, or relation to the neighborhood, would be in the opinion of the governing authority, uh, promote the public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, and general welfare. So that's the, that's really what we're, what kinda brings this thing before you, is it, it is a special, we consider it a special exception because it doesn't fit neatly in any of the categories that we have in the ordinance. So our zoning analysis, uh, the property does have reasonable use as, as it's currently zoned as ag. Uh, the property, proposed use does conform with the J-LIS study. The proposed use, uh, does conform with Liberty County Comprehensive Plan because it's, it's got a significant agricultural component. Uh, will there be a adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? Our answer is no. As a proposed use suitable in views, in view of nearby uses, our answer is yes, and we do not, we have not identified any negative impacts on transportation or infrastructure. Number seven, will this allow short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? No. Uh, would it cause sprawl or domino effect? No. And we haven't noted any, any, uh, unique historical sites that might be adversely affected by it. Is a property in a partial, in a, in a flood hazard area, you saw on the map that it, that a portion of the property is in the flood zone area, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? Uh, our answer there is no, they're not really asking for a rezoning, they're just wanting a special exception to be able to use it, to, to be able to turn the grapes that they're producing on the property into wine for sale. And then number twelve, are there unique conditions with support, approval, or denial? And we have not identified any. LCPC heard this, uh, request at their December twentieth meeting, and they recommend approval with standard conditions. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
The petitioner here?
It is, I was gonna mention, that is Ms. Lewis that...
Ah, okay. I thought she was gonna bring out wine bottles out there.
I know, I wish, I wish I could. We're not quite there yet, right? But I do have, I have, uh, proposed what the building looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll meet again. If you want to, so we'll leave one for Commissioner Jones if he wants to.
Can I give that one to him after I've done with him?
Sure, you can. Just overview, please, ma'am, I mean, he made a presentation, just a little overview, then what you?
Yep. Um, I mean, I just, I don't know if you had...
Did I miss her name for the record?
I'm sorry, April Lewis.
April Lewis.
My name? Um, as you can see, we, the very first page, um, I just laid out kind of what our plan is initially for the property, where we would like to put everything. Um, there is currently a pond on the property that we would like to clean up, um, it's, it's not in the best condition currently, um, so we would like to clean that up, that'll help decrease some of the, um, bug infestation that's going on there. And, uh, the, where we would like to put the cabins, um, right, right as you just right when you first come in, we'd like to have the cabins there, um, that we rent out through like VRBO or Airbnb. And then myself, uh, my husband, and, um, at least one of our children will be taking residence on the property.
What kind of a work crew do you expect to have?
I'm sorry?
Is it family-run, or you gonna have some, a work crew?
We'll definitely have to have some staff, um, especially for the event center, that's not, definitely not something that, um, we can handle on our own.
And once again, what size does that event center propose, what?
Thirty by fifty. Um, possibly just a little bit larger than that, it depends on, um, how many tables I can, I can get in there. Um, but the, there is an actual, um, design for that in here. It is, I think the fourth or fifth page. There it is. So this is the event center, um, as I plan it, and that would be this, um, layout here. The layout and design there. Um, currently, it, it's, um, slightly larger, it's fifty by sixty is the plan on here, um, with the ten-foot wraparound porch, um, that by my calculations can hold a hundred people then.
Just out of curiosity, this has been property, uh, that you've had, or...
No, we're purchasing the property. Yes.
I, I can hear, uh, the number of people you were expecting to be able to fit in to that?
One hundred is the expectation.
How far down the K, do you know where it's at, Commissioner?
Yeah, mhm.
Huh?
You go across that bridge.
You go across the bridge by Foxes and Julys?
No, uh, when you go down Charlie Butler, you actually make a right, and there's a bridge right there.
Yeah.
Okay, right there, at the K?
The K Bridge. I, I call that the K Bridge, right on the other side of Mr. Holmes.
Okay.
William Holmes.
So you go on up then, like you going toward Anthony's, and he's on the right, that's where you gonna put it at? Okay.
Yeah, yes.
I was trying to figure out exactly where it was at.
Obviously, you're planning for this to be a quaint location because that's a dirt road.
Yes, yes, yeah, and, and most, I mean, we've, um, we've done a lot of research, um, and, and visited a lot, um, you know, and...
Kinda tucked away, kinda...
That, that kind of, yes, yes, the tucked away, kind of off the beaten path is...
Me and Commissioner Stipp are thinking of winery in Liberty County, Georgia.
This is awfully nice, very nice, I think it's needed also.
Yeah, I had, of course, I don't know if it's, uh, for Jeff, but Jeff, uh, looking at this, this narrative, and it says, um, proposed changes, say the applicant seek to develop the property for residential first, and then it got agriculture and commercial. Um, would this wouldn't, because people will be living in there, um, it may be short-term or, or whatever, would that fall on our subdivision ordinance? Uh, 'cause I think, did this come before us, one time before, we talked about... Would that fall on our subdivision ordinance? Because I think, did this come before us, one time before we talked about the gravel roads up in there?
No, that was the other side.
That was the other side. But, um, so, so at, at this, at this proposal here, would they, the roads, would, would the roads be paved?
This will be a driveway. They, they're not, they're not proposing to cut off the individual lots of the cottages. They will all be on one thing, common property.
I mean, so is, is it pri, a private?
Private, the whole thing, the whole twenty-something acres of development area will be private. And those cottages will all be under common ownership.
And the roads and the infrastructure and everything would just be?
On them.
On them, okay.
A driveway.
And, and I guess the other thing, Jeff, I think when you were presenting, and I, I don't know if you said twenty thousand gallons, you said twenty. And you said twenty, but it's twenty thousand a year?
Twenty thousand gallons.
Yeah, but, but you, you said twenty and I was just thinking, you know, you get the right people and they can knock that out by the six o'clock news. By, by the time Tom Brokaw come on? But you, you said, you said twenty, twenty thousand.
I was curious about what that was. Just wanted you to know, I did do a little research. Twenty thousand gallons is about the equivalent of a backyard pool, just in case you.
Okay.
Know what, visualize what twenty thousand gallons.
A little trouble knocking out two hundred, twenty thousand, but, but twenty thousand, I could go get you a couple of boards right now that'll knock that out before this meeting is over. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Brew that much, twenty thousand a year, you would have to have some kind of state permit as a brewer? Or you can just do that without?
Well, it, it is not, it's not brewing, it's, it's vintning. So you, you do have to, the production facility has to be there. But it's mostly from juice. So I will have to have a license. We have to have license to sell. Wine falls under just slightly different type of license than what hard liquor and beer fall under in the state of Georgia. So there is a special license for it and we'll have to be licensed to sell and to produce.
That's what, yeah, that's what I want to know. Because other than that, I'd be just like making moonshine.
Who's the winemaker? Who's the winemaker?
Mother Nature.
You, really?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
Okay, so now, one other question I got is, um, it's kind of traffic, and I know this is just for rezoning more or less, but I'm just looking at that road when you turn in off of Charlie Butler on the K Creek making that right. With that kind of traffic, how can we look at that, Jeff? I mean, I don't want to just do something and then we got a problem later. Mr. Chairman, have you ever, I'm going to ask my two inspectors down there. Have y'all been down that way lately?
We've already been down there. Look. We got a bottle of the brew. And it looks like it perks real well. Everything, it, it really does. And when you get down there and you start to leave, you really don't care if it's dirt or what. You wind up getting back somehow.
But you understand what I'm saying. It's an hour, it's an hour until you get to the bridge. Once you go over the bridge, going back toward Riceboro, it kind of widens out. But it do floods down there every now and then.
It does flood every so often, yes.
Yeah. So that means your roadway going in, you will have to build it up higher and everything else will have to be built up to a certain, which, and that's not our problem. Okay.
Well, it's interesting. All right. Good saying being.
Motion then?
Chair, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation coming from LCPC on this winery in Liberty County.
I'll tell you what, we get to have that under our time, sir. We voted to have the first winery in Liberty County, Georgia.
We got the first legal wine.
All in favor, show your hands, please. Just let's wish you the best. Keep us posted if you will.
Yes. Let us know when the ribbon cut.
Going to rezoning, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Chair, turn the motion to go out of public.
Don't move.
Second, all in favor. All right, rezoning, twenty twenty oh eight one LC.
Okay. Chairman, members of the board, this next rezoning request has been submitted by a Warehouser company. They want to rezone twenty-eight acres of land from A1 to I1 industrial for a wood yard. And they've been, they've, they've tried to, been trying to get this completed in Liberty County for a while. We got one piece in Riceboro rezoned and ran, running some problems with the access because of a curve in the road. And they've currently found, as you're going to see from my presentation, a good straightaway piece. It's got an existing dirt road that goes into their, I think, twelve-thousand acre tract of land. So it's back in the, where a wood yard ought to be that doesn't really bother anybody.
An existing private dirt road?
That's right. This is our sign. That's coastal highway there going down from Riceboro down to Newport interchange. This is our ad in the Coastal Courier. And this is just a plat of the property, but this is a plat of a property that's in the middle of a giant tract of land that, that they own, like, as I said, twelve thousand acres of land. And you can see how that property kind of sprawls out along the edge of Liberty County. This is, this is all McIntosh County over here, so you can see how that property kind of spreads out. And this is their, just again, another look at that same property. And this is where that platted that I just showed you in the earlier plat, that's where it's located. This is coastal highway. It's about a half a mile off of coastal highway down this dirt road is where they want to build this wood yard.
And it's, oh, that's their property surrounding?
It's all their property. It's a very large timber tract. This is the.
Let me just make this plain. So if you're going there, you have to be going there looking for that.
That's right, that's right. The, this is the previous one that they got rezoned up in Riceboro that didn't work out. You can see that curve in the road and that became a problem and they were not able to go forward with that. So this is a much better location. It's along a straight road and at, at the, that existing dirt road that goes back into the timber tract. And you can see the floodplain there. Part of this property is in the floodplain, really about half of it is in the floodplain and then the other half is in the upper area. And their narrative, what they want to do is they want to bring in logs and debark them, cut them to length and fumigate them and put them in a box and, and ship them back to the port to be sent overseas. That's, that's what they want to do in a nutshell. Again, I don't need to read that to you again, but they are going to bring these, bring the, these logs in and cut them to length and scale them and send them back out to the Port of Savannah. And that's a not-so-easy-to-read picture of it. I'm going to show you that picture. That's kind of their site layout. This is coming in off of that dirt road, kind of comes in and loops around. This is their debarker, their fumigator, and then where they load it back into the box and send it back out again. That's, that's essentially what they're doing. We do have some representatives here from Warehouser to answer any more specific questions that you have. Our zoning analysis for this request, the property does have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned as zone ag and it's been growing pine trees for a long time. Does the property conform to the J-List plan? Yeah, J-List likes pine forests. The, number three, does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? No, it's, uh, the Comprehensive Plan calls for this to be ag and this is a wood yard. We couldn't figure out any way that you could do that under ag zone. It needs, it needs to be industrial because of the processing that they're doing, even though the, a lot of the product might be grown on the, on the property, on the tract. Will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? No. Will the property, will the proposed use be suitable in view of nearby uses? Yes. It's in the middle of a timber tract that's not going to be affecting anybody. Number six, will the proposed zoning create a burden on transportation, streets, infrastructures, public safety? No. Will this allow short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? No. What it calls sprawl or domino effect? No. And we haven't identified any sites, any historical sites that would be negatively impacted. Is it in a flood hazard area? Yes, I showed you the map there. About half of it's in the floodplain. Is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? Yes, it's a wood yard in the middle of a giant forest. Number twelve, are there unique conditions with support approval or denial? And we pointed out, the proposed portion to be rezoned is about a half a mile from coastal highway. So it's, it's, it's pretty well isolated from any neighbors. And Planning Commission heard this at their December twentieth meeting and they recommend approval with standard conditions.
So the petition is here?
They are here.
Right behind you.
Chairman, you just come and follow Ms. Lewis, Lee, just give a little overview. I mean, we heard the presentation, but just give us your spill on this, on this project, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Trevor Peters with Thomason-Hutton Engineering. This is Paul Fay with Warehouser Company. And we are here for the rezoning petition that's in front of you tonight. So as Jeff brought out, what Warehouser is proposing to do is a log transfer station, for lack of a better term. So logs will come in, they'll be cut to length to fit in a container, they'll be debarked, some may be fumigated. And then those trucks will then haul the containers off to the Port of Savannah. And that is the totality of the operations for that site.
And, and you chose that location because obviously you all own the property.
Correct.
Using your property, okay. And, and this will operate as any other industrial site or commercial site? They, they change it for agricultural now too. So there'll be like any other business?
The rezoning was to change that to what use, Jeff?
Said industrial.
Industrial, okay.
Industrial.
I want industrial, I'm sorry. It will, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, now, you said it's near the McIntosh County line at South Newport?
It's about halfway between Riceboro and the interchange, sixties.
You know, it's embedded ours there?
Yeah.
Okay, so between embedded ours and actually it's about almost a mile from the interchange.
Is it past the Get Your Coon Road down there? Past that?
Yeah.
Okay. And.
Where the count road is. That's the road or what they call it.
Okay. Now, the reason I was asking that, because I mean, if you say you're going to Port of Savannah, you're just going to come out, make a left and you'll be headed to ninety-five?
Yes, sir, make a right.
Make a right.
Make, make a right, okay.
Make a right.
Okay.
What's his name? Either one. I just got a couple.
Yes, sir.
When y'all go out there, will y'all be operating on a pad or be operating on a dirt? When the trucks come in, will y'all be, the logs, will they be located on a dirt or pad?
They'll be on pads. We'll, we'll have cement pads. We'll put the logs on. Now, some of them might get put on, on it, but they are, we'll put runners down and then stack the wood on it.
Well, that leads to Mr. Long. When trucks are coming out of a dirt road like that and so many, what's, is there a requirement to have some kind of pad up at the road to?
Let me, let me interject there. I'm sorry, sir. But so where the road connects to Highway seventeen there, there's going to be a concrete pad for ingress and egress and then the entirety of the road and then most of the site itself will have a stabilized base material down. So that way, you know, it'll prevent any tracking or any kind of rutting or any kind of pavement failure where there's a connection there with the road and the trucks coming on and off.
Now, how, how many trucks are you expecting to date roughly? I'm not going to hold you there, just.
Hundred and twenty.
A day.
Correct.
So that'd be a hundred and twenty times two.
Those are a hundred and twenty in total, sixty, sixty in, sixty out.
Okay. Remember the last time we had a conversation about?
We did, we did have a conversation.
Well, good one.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay, all right. All right, okay.
Going to the Georgia ports?
Yes.
Oh, that ain't where they're going. They're going out of Liberty County. That's one of the things that's kind of bothering some sometimes is you kind of wonder why we don't have something like that here. That we can use them.
One other question I just got. Y'all planning on putting some shallow wells or something out there? And the reason why I'm going there is the location of it, there's no major water supply and you're talking about debarking and all that stuff like that. And I'm looking at some kind of fire suppressor.
Yes, sir. And so Warehouser, safety first, number one. And so they definitely plan on having fire protection apparatus on the site. Right now, we're doing an evaluation on what's going to be the most cost-effective, whether it's going to be dry hydrants from a pond or well or something else that may be able to satisfy the fire protection requirements for the structures that'll be on the site.
Well, just go ahead and run the water line from Riceboro all the way down to South Newport.
You're working a deal.
Okay, chair.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. All right, Chair and Tana motion?
Chair, I make a motion before the recommendation of the planning, LC planning a zone.
Second.
In a second, we approve the presentation as presented, twenty twenty-two oh eight one LC. Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands, please. All right, motion passed us. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you, Chairman. Happy New Year.
Wow, Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff, you, that's enough to keep us to Christmas right there.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Chair, turn the motion to come out of.
So moved, Chairman.
All in favor, back into regular session. Engineering.
Mr. Long. I'm going to try to briefly walk you through.
There you, there you go. Good move, good move.
Some of these things that are left on your desk today.
Can we just read it and send you our okay tomorrow? It's kind of thick.
Yeah, probably wouldn't hurt my feelings. So basically, everybody's seen the exhibits. You've got exhibit one-three-five, which, you know, this is part of the things that you've seen in pink is the residential and commercial development that's planned by the forum group. Then you've got some of the buildings that are planned for north access to Village Road and that forum group already did on the north side of the industrial park. Then you got what's remaining in the industrial park, just coming in. And we took those and then plus the ARCO, the BlueScope stuff as well as the Newcastle, the new bridge piece and some of the Davis piece. And what we ended up doing was applying from the IT Traffic Trip Generation Manual, which is pretty much the bible of how you generate traffic counts for all these particular things. And we kind of applied it over a twenty-year period that we think this will get built. So we used that to generate what we think the Island's Highway improvements need to be to generate the geography, where we have the four lanes divided highway, you know, the red lights we're looking at, the turn lanes and just how all those work together. And from that, we went and we generated a construction cost of what we think it's going to be. We ran this by some folks, some friends of mine over at Baker Constructors, old RB Baker folks, just to kind of make sure that we were right on our prices. And, you know, current dollars were about twenty million, five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that we think would need to be for this. So over a seventy-year period, we're looking that we need about twenty-five million dollars to be able to generate that much fund to pay back or to construct the required improvements that will be required if all of this comes to fruition. So how do you pay for twenty-five million dollars? You know, it's not something that, that we can just fund. You know, we don't have sales tax for that. We don't, state money's coming for it. So one of the things we looked at doing was generating fees. And basically what we did is, let me back up. I did forget to show you one. This is terribly confusing document. But what it is, is, is all the traffic counts. So if everybody wants to know what the numbers are, you can see the numbers and what we included or didn't include. But it's not something that I can really say, hey, this is it, without context of why and what we're using it for and what it means. So from all these numbers, we backed out, okay? How much is it costing per trip for all these improvements? Generated a fee schedule, which is the document that looks like this. Basically, what you do is, we don't have a crystal ball, so we were able to take the twenty-five million. We know what we got coming. And if everything that's coming comes, minus a portion that the county would have to pay for the residents east of the development area, which is about three million dollars of the county portion, then all these improvements will be funded by the impact assessment. So, you know, yes, we do have to bond or, or fund a lot of this upfront to get it done, but we do get reimbursed through an assessment. So, you've heard Kelly talk about development agreements, and I think he's gonna be talking a little bit more about agreements tonight. But this gives you a preview of what the fees would be. So, basically, if you look at what the classification is at residential, what the land use category is, we have, we established the number of average daily trips that we're gonna contribute to that use. We gave it a unit of measure, so that as a developer comes, he can look at this chart and say, okay, this is what the fee was gonna be for this size building, or this type of activity, or just what is coming. And if all those come, and everything on these maps come, then we'll recoup our money for this roadway improvement. Now, one of the things we're really pushing for is to get these charts out and let some of the industry kind of start looking at these, because a lot of them are looking and trying to come, and you know, a lot of them need to know what these numbers look like, so they're making their decisions about coming to Liberty County or not coming to Liberty County, to have a full picture of what's going on. Yes, sir.
Before you go, okay, you said when a developer comes, let's say this is built under the industrial, and the industrial authority area, would this apply to them, too?
If it's in that development area, what we call, what we call the blue area, yes, sir.
Okay, so this wouldn't apply to Tradeport West? Just?
No, we, we, you know, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Brandon and I have talked about trying to figure out something separate, because we got twelve million dollars worth of improvements we need to do west of I ninety-five. And we have, a lot of that falls inside the city of Midway, and we have presented an access management plan to help control traffic on the west side of I ninety-five to the city of Midway. So, there's gonna need to be some involvement on that side as well as us and what we need to do, because something similar is gonna need to happen on that side.
Okay.
Well, it looks like, we don't know yet.
Get back in address real quick. So, he was really talking about Tradeport West over on seventeen?
Seventeen.
In Midway. So, so, right now?
I'm sorry.
Right now, the Development Authority trying to take a look at what that buildout in that park might be, similar to what has happened here in this park, and then anticipate what traffic improvements need to be made out on, out in front. Some of those improvements are already gonna be made with the recent industry they announced and with EMS going in there. But, to answer your question, trying to run that similar type model to know what's gotta be achieved in there, yes, sir.
Yes.
A little part to do over there, because we don't know, we don't know a plan for what's coming in there, so you can't really do a a traffic generator based on type in there and come up with an improvement call that you don't know right now. So, but we're trying to do the same type thing.
Yeah.
Between Jeff and Trent, do we have a, just a general layout, five-year possible buildout? Or beyond seventeen to ninety-five?
Between seventeen to ninety-five along eighty-four? Well, we have the access management plan that we completed. Now, as far as a planning document, I don't know that we have one. About five years.
Is that possible to have one? I mean, you, you know, it may, it's subject to change now, but just anything to put something in your mind, what, what there could look like in five years, or?
We don't have any kind of scenarios like that that says, that, that gives a crystal ball about what we think is gonna be there. We do have a long-range plan that does cover beyond that period, but we don't, we can't really specifically say how much is gonna be developed. We, we kind of know, we, we've talked with some people who are interested, and we, we, we know that there's some things in the pipeline, but we can't say exactly what will be coming over the next five years.
Is that mixed use all the way from, from seventeen to ninety-five?
Yes. Well, the city of Midway, as Trent pointed out, the city of Midway, that, all of that's in the city of Midway, city limits, and it's all, a large part of it is owned interstate commercials, so they have to prove everything as a conditional use.
Got you, yes.
Okay. Well, now, that's up to seven hundred feet, or everything along Highway eighty-four from seventeen?
Fifty feet on each side of, of eighty-four, so it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty deep swath.
Okay.
Give me an idea, seven hundred fifty feet is from here to where? You, you engineer people?
The football field is three hundred feet.
From here to eighty-four.
So, it's two football fields?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, got it.
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Are you gonna fuss about it? Got it.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty good piece.
That's a good visual.
Chairman, can we, did you, is this gonna be a discussion, or?
Oh, I would, we didn't, well, he, he had a question, and I just followed up with a question.
I just had a question.
Okay, I just, I, I wanted to ask one thing there, Trent, is the, I mean, I know we're pretty much contained to what we're talking about in the development part, but let's just say, what is land mass, and I don't know, but Jeff, you might know, that's beyond Trade Hill Road toward the coast that could potentially be houses.
It's a lot.
Well, that's, that's what I, I mean, what I remember, there's, the land mass that's in there is gonna, it may come before half of the park is built out, which creates a real big issue, because we've got to provide the folks to, you know, to come off of there, so not to get the horse, you know, in front of the cart any more than we've already got him, or the cart behind him. I mean, I want us to move forward with what we've talked about here, but we're gonna have, I mean, you've got land down there that could potentially go back out of conservation and be one hundred percent residential, two acre lots. So, and you can build a house quicker than you can put up a metal building, I think, so, you know, that's, that's something that we really need to be looking at. And, and I, another area is, of course, it's a state route, is in Commissioner Thrift's district. And I mean, this gentleman up here today identified Highway seventeen, and that is a land mass in there that's open for any residential on that highway. And they've got water, so, not to deviate from what you planned is, Jeff, but I'm just saying, we probably need to be focusing somebody, some attention on that, because it'll just pop up here one day, and where have we been? We've been studying the overpass, we've been studying the industrial park, and now we're being hit with a multitude of traffic coming off the island, so I, I'm, I know we, we've discussed it before in this meeting. So, I just don't want it to get too far behind us, you know? That's all I had, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure it's on.
Mr. Chairman, I just had to, I think you've done a very extensive job here on this calculation. It looks like you've captured quite a bit that I see, you know, traveling up and down the interstate. You've got quite a bit on here, but is this just for that part of the county? Would this, or would that, would this be any type, like if somebody came out on one nineteen or Airport Road, were that industrial, I mean, pretty much that's all planned out, but this is just for the, that corridor down there and the?
The spread growth area. This covers the area. I don't know how.
May that in the future be?
Be expanded out toward, on the west side, if we, of course, it's just?
Well, right now, this is, this covers the area that we did in the comprehensive, in the comprehensive.
You wanted that map, didn't you?
I think Jeff's trying to get back to that map for me.
You know, I was thinking, the comprehensive plan, it seemed to have just focused on that east end, and that, but what if some of that starts going to the west? Then we, do we come back and look at a, a different plan for that end of the county? If it's within those years?
Piggyback, so, so, you, you took a look what improvements were needed, and then the calculation, the calculations that you see here are all for a standard guide, so they could really be used anywhere, as long as that guide's used. The models that were run on repayment and payback of the twenty million were based just on this geographic area.
Okay.
But it's adaptable to?
Could be adaptable to another area in the same type format.
Because like someone said earlier, with the Heinzville making that jump over there and getting some water, you know, and hopefully it'll come in through that on the west side of Liberty County. I think you did a good job on this calculation.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I hired a traffic engineer back in the summer, and she's done a phenomenal job at helping to put this together. So, what do you all need from us, Mr. Brown?
Tonight was a, was an opportunity, if you will, Mr. Chairman, certainly what the board, whatever the board wants to do, was to take a look at how the plan was laid out, the funding strategy, along with how the calculation, everything this Long just explained, and then also do the same with what Mr. Davis has on draft development agreements, so that you understand how the two work together in doing that, because basically, the developer agreements that you do based on development of these parcels, will use this guide to determine the analysis, this, or the amount that has to be paid in those development agreements for the infrastructure improvement portions that they pay. So, really for review tonight, and hopefully for adoption in your mid-month.
Do you want to say one thing? We did compare this to the published rates in Bryan County.
Come back up.
We did compare this to the published rates in Bryan County, and these are less than the published rates in Bryan County.
But it get a better deal in Liberty County? Possibly.
But possibly.
Possibly.
Yeah, as long as it, you.
At least comparable.
Bryan County or wait.
At least comparable.
So, yes.
And I'm gonna say this, because I heard this say, we, we're not trying to compete with, with Bryan County, we're just trying to be proactive.
They're competing against us.
Yeah, we just need to know how we compare.
We need to get in the game.
Yep.
I, I didn't want to have a number so far out there that I was?
Call it greed, that's what they labeling it as.
We need to fit in where we, yeah, listen.
If it takes greed to survive, let's go for it.
If, if, if they don't want to invite us to the table, let's create our own table.
I'm, I'm taking good notes there, huh?
Yes, sir.
From my right, alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. So, we need to hear Kelly's piece to kind of see how all this could fit together?
Okay.
Coach, I'm Edward said.
We just want our fair share, Mr. Chairman.
That's, that's a good way, that's a diplomatic way to say it.
I remember saying one time.
Fortunate share.
Play to win the game.
Happy New Year, Kelly.
You need to shave and clean up.
Thanks, sir.
Trent has just provided a summary of the most important piece of this puzzle, which are the costs that we hope to capture and apply towards construction of the infrastructure improvements. But the agreement you have in front of you is, it's a working draft, but this is the mechanism that which will allow you to collect the contributions from area developers and apply those to the infrastructure cost. Again, I know it's might be scheduled for your mid-month, but I think with respect to both proposed fee schedule and this agreement, it's hoped that we could get the continued input from stakeholders to include developers. And I know the internal review of this also is not yet complete, so we need to get comments from Trent and Joey and the others involved in the process. But the more, I think we can involve the stakeholders and developers in the process, I think the more smoothly it will go.
Have we started that process of?
We, we have. I mean, they, they've been involved throughout in the process. And so, it's my hope to provide them with copies of the draft working documents and draft fee schedules, and just get whatever comments they might be interested in providing. But, again, this is just the mechanism. You know, currently, the county does not have an impact fee ordinance, so this is the next best alternative. And this agreement will be, much like you did with your approval of the property adjacent to Tradeport East at your last meeting, I believe. You know, you required that the county and the developer entered into a mutually acceptable agreement whereby these fees can be collected and applied to the future infrastructure cost. And so, that's what this agreement will do, and it'll typically be required at the time the property is rezoned, or at the time the project seeks to encroach upon a county public right-of-way, like Island's Highway. You know, Island's Highway is a county road, it's not a state road, so the county has exclusive authority to decide who and how encroachment is made upon the property, and that's handled typically by Trent's office. But, as you know, Trent's fee schedule determines the cost, which would be a prorata portion of their overall impact with respect to the Island's Highway corridor, and their, their fair share of those costs required to construct the transportation improvements. And this just provides for things like timing, the rights of the county in the event the developer should default and not pay those costs, the liability for payment of cost. Importantly, this agreement is restricted solely to collection and payment of the cost. It doesn't pre-approve any projects, it doesn't grant any approvals for any other matter. So, even though a project or developer might sign this agreement, they have no special privileges or rights, and they have to go through the county's permitting process, just like any other applicant would. And so, I encourage you just to take a look at it. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. But, it's just a legal mechanism to provide for the assessment and collection and application of these, of these transportation costs that we've been discussing the last several weeks. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, but probably best to answer your questions at your next meeting after you folks have had a chance to review it, or, or prior to that meeting.
Anything in particular you want us to?
No, sir, I don't think so. Pretty much, everything is addressed. The, the only issue that isn't specifically addressed in this agreement is what happens if the county should decide not to proceed or to complete some of the transportation improvements. And in that, again, in that event, most jurisdictions provide for limited refund to the developers who've already paid those costs, but that's something we're still examining and trying our best to develop a, a fair solution. So, that, that'll be incorporated in your, in a future agreement, the final agreement.
How common are these kind of agreements, sir?
They're very common throughout the state, especially in coastal Georgia. I know, for example, Bryan County's been referenced, but other jurisdictions have done it as well. And fortunately, unfortunately, it's usually adopted by jurisdictions who are blessed with the problems that we have, and that is too much development too quickly. And so, you know, this is oftentimes a tool used by jurisdictions to do what they can do to exact a fair contribution from these developers. So, yes, it's very common. And, and as we've discussed, this may not be our permanent solution. The permanent solution may be a formal impact fee ordinance or other assessment of some other kind, but for now, this is the best option we have available, and this is the one that you folks have decided to pursue.
Yeah, and I know several developers are waiting on this to settle, so we can, so they'll know what their expenditures, that cost, upfront cost will be.
And in my conversations with the developers, I should say, I mean, most, they're not surprised by it, and I think they welcome it, because they understand that these improvements are necessary for their projects to be successful and safe. So, it not only addresses the needs of the public, but the needs of these particular projects as well.
Any questions for Kelly right now?
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
After Commissioner Giller jokes.
No, I, I was just gonna, you know, Kelly, when the chairman asked you was, how common was this, if I were you, I would've just said that, um, that you were the inventor of this, and you, you could've got all kind of, all, all, all kind of credits. For. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You should've said that, you know, this is the first of its kind, and everybody's gonna follow you.
Liberty County proud.
There you go.
Right.
In your top there, Kelly, is the transportation improvement contribution agreement. Do we not want to put an infrastructure, too? I mean, you're talking about the county, but you're going, and you're talking about the roads, but there's some, something, the infrastructure is gonna have to be shared, or, I mean, we're gonna have to eat it up. And the other question is, how is it distributed? Does it come to the Board of Commissioners? It's benefiting going into an industrial park? Will it go to the, the Industrial Authority? It'll stay here?
Here.
Exclusively through the county.
Here.
Yeah, I think the, the public improvements are gonna be required, they're gonna be outlined in the, the impact study. And, you know, Trent and the others have gone through and continue to fine tune the estimates of those costs. You know, I think, what, what is the current estimate, Trent? Twenty-five million. But, but, but the, the exact improvements that are required are basically, are gonna be spelled out in the, in the impact study. And so, those are the ones that will be undertaken by the county, and they are limited to transportation improvements, roadway improvements. You're right that the need for similar assessments will be required in the future, especially with the especially with respect to water and wastewater. That's a different issue for a different day, but you're absolutely right. The quicker we can address those problems and provide for a future mechanism, whether it be a formal impact fee ordinance or not, the better. Because it'll definitely be needed, as well as, you know, other assessments, you know, for fire safety and others have been approved as well. But most importantly, I think, transportation, and urgently, transportation and wastewater will be required.
I agree, getting there is, you know, half the, half the job. But when you, you know, when a person signs this, he's gonna look down there and say, well, I signed this for transportation.
That's right.
And the other thing about it is, is Thomas and Hutton Engineering's on it, and this board does not hire Thomas and Hutton.
No, and again, this is a working draft. I think Thomas and Hutton has cooperated with the county engineer's office. They have considerable experience with it. So we've relied on, I think, Thomas and Hutton, but others, in particularly in formulating the fee schedule.
You can work with them, Trent. That's the main thing.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll tear this thing apart, Kelly.
Good enough. But you're right, it's limited just to transportation improvements, nothing else. But there will be a future need to address these other concerns, particularly water and wastewater.
The county's role in this is transportation only. When it comes to the other, that will be up to the development authority or to the city midway. But we're not providing water and/or sewage to them.
And as I mentioned earlier, and as the chairman commented, this only addresses transportation contributions. It doesn't pre-approve or approve any project. So if they can't satisfy other requirements, including water and wastewater capacity, the project simply won't, won't proceed.
Let's talk about it. When does it have to be, would enjoy, when's the, we're gonna have it before the planning meeting?
Yes, sir, you need to, because as the chairman mentioned, I mean, you have several projects that are really already obligated, that are waiting to know how much they need to pay and what needs to be in the context of their development agreement.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with the transportation, that's the biggest issue, the biggest dime. But I do think that along with that, we, you know, we've already talked about retention ponds, water runoff, ditches, whatever's gotta be done, traffic lights, lighting along the edge of it. So not expecting a developer, I mean, a, you know, an industry to come in and put it all in, but we, you know, let's address what parts in there. Because if the road's already fixed, then the next guy coming, he said, I ain't got to pay for nothing. Because it's just covering transportation. So I'm saying, the infrastructure part ought to be in there.
Yep.
I mean, that's me, and, and I'm not a...
Yeah, I think Kelly mentioned, the next thing that is on your planning agenda is to, is to bring back up the impact fee discussion, where those things would come up, whether it's water, wastewater, emergency services, several things.
Okay.
It's reflected in the fee schedule more than this agreement. But, you know, the county's intent is not to unduly burden industry or commercial businesses that choose to locate in the development area. It's just to make sure that they agree to pay their fair and reasonable share of the impact of their projects on our local transportation infrastructure.
I'm sure they are, I just want to make sure that it's, the worst smithing is done dry.
We'll do our best.
That's your forte.
I hope so.
Alright. So we'll bring this back to the mid-month.
Thank you, Kelly.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Look forward to my, I didn't get my, I missed it. Did you get your Christmas present from Kelly?
It must, it must be in the mail.
Yeah, I got one, everybody did. Everybody got one.
Mr. Dodd, thank you, Ms. Davis.
Take care, buddy.
Night. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if you remember back in March of 2020, we signed a standby contract for post-disaster debris cleanup and disposal with Crowder Golf. What I'm coming for tonight, our contract expires in March of this year. I'm asking for a year extension till March of 2024, sir.
Alright.
Has anything changed in it? It's the same?
No, sir, it's, it's the same.
You make everything so easy.
Say the best for last.
I didn't mean to switch you around, but I need to get Kelly in so we can flow with that whole thing.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, understood.
Alright, same contract.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Chair and tenor motion.
Chair, make a motion that we accept the same.
You missed it.
Second.
We had to so move down on this same.
All in favor.
He was still going over there.
It's, it's kind of like board appointments.
Out of number seven on here is a leftover?
A land matter, please.
I mean, we still have to vote, Mr. Chair.
Vote, okay, all in favor, put your hands, please. Happy New Year to y'all. Fog cleared up, getting those, those weather alerts, is the fog gone now, that whole fog thing?
So we haven't got one, it's, she's been coming in around like three or four o'clock in the morning, but we haven't got any for tonight.
And New Year's night, it was bad.
Yeah.
I could barely make it home from...
It was all the smoke when Georgia won it for a while.
I thought it was all the fireworks.
Alright, chair and tenor motion, go into the next session for land acquisition.
Go move.
Second, all in favor.
Second.